We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move on to public comment for any item that is not on the agenda pertinent.
Uh, let's see.
You may, sir. Come on up here. Sit right there, Tristan. Share your full name, favorite cereal.
Okay, but I'm just gonna start. So before, yep, so before we kind of get started, my, my name is Tristan Peter Bumpelber, and I have been with the theater ever since they reopened from kind of the COVID aftermath. So I've been there for officially when it, since June, since, um, for about two years I've been there. And I have some ideas I want to give, give to you guys to help have the theater grow.
Okay, Tristan, floor is yours. Go ahead.
All righty, for one of our ideas is possibly bringing back Wayback Wednesdays, or possibly starting something called Throwback Thursdays. So it's basically where we play like the older movies like, let's say Back to the Future, Top Gun, movies like that, because I know those were very successes for, you know, having parents wanting to show these movies to these, to their kids of what they watched when they were growing up. And for another idea I have in mind is a dinner and a movie, where we partner with local restaurants, let's say like Twigs, Pie in the Sky, Mimos, Eastern Drive, and places like that. It's where we sell a package where there are two dinners and two movie tickets for a set price. And for a third idea, I kind of took a little inspiration from Essex, but it's to have a sensory-friendly screening, because we have no, I know some special needs people love going to the movies, because that's one thing that brings their stimming out. And it's basically where we're gonna have kind of the volume all the way down, basically, you know, help provide a friendly environment for people. And if it can be a little too much, they can, we can provide a fidget, like a squeeze ball, pop, like Slimer Putty, and a fidget spinner. Yep. And then the fourth one is, which really gonna kind of bring this out, is where we have a, where we partner with like a community place, and we, where we're gonna have discounted tickets, where we have specific places, like a Hannaford night, a Barry Calvo night, or a Derringer night, and we're basically gonna offer those tickets for a discounted price. And we can also have like a teacher appreciation night, you know, where we appreciate teachers like Mrs. Trudy Coffey out here, there.
My thank you.
Or having kind of a hospital night for our nurses and doctors that work really hard to keep us all healthy and safe, and especially you guys who help run everything, and without you guys, we, we don't know what we've been doing.
I wouldn't go quite that far. Quite that far, but thank you, actually.
And then for another idea I had in mind was, we do like a once-a-month screenings matinees for like people who are like over 70, and like partner with a nursing home, like where we show movies like Gone with the Wind, Jailhouse Rock, or a Jane Wayne Western, or John Wayne. Yeah, where basically we can have people, them, these seniors, you know, feel young again, and you know, let them enjoy, enjoy it again for the first time. And for another, another thing we can possibly do is, like during holiday times, like example being Thanksgiving or Christmas, where we run special movies, where we have a Christmas movie every week, which examples include Polar Express, Elf, Christmas Vacation, Die Hard. Movies like that, where it's basically we have one night a week, we show us a specific Christmas movie to everyone. And then number seven would be giving more, expanding for more working sessions. And I mean popcorn, soda, and candy are a classic, but people want a variety of choice, you know, because sometimes people don't like getting popcorn, candy, and soda, or we can add, we can offer things like nachos, pizza, hot dogs, places, stuff like that. And plus, the Welland is a piece of history out of St. Orleans, and we need to give people a comeback and give them reason to do so. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tristan. Appreciate it. Um, I love your ideas. Uh, can you, couple questions?
Absolutely.
Wayback Wednesday was that? And/or Throwback Thursday, were those free movies? I think they were, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
So it was just people had to pay for their own concessions, right?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I love the idea, dinner and a movie. I know that, um, and, and all of your ideas, I think, are, are great. We need to do a better job of promoting the theater. I think it's all new to, to staff, but we are, um, I know that city manager had a conversation with Robbie, Monday it was, or whenever it was, so they're working through some, some bugs in the operation of the theater, but city manager will be back in the office this week, and we'll be sure to share this. Sarah, I know you've been engaged in that as well. Do you have any thoughts?
I wrote one through seven down, and Ashley, Dominic, and I have a meeting with Rob and Seeley early next week, and we'll be talking about it.
I think we found a new owner for the theater.
I guess.
Does anyone have any questions for Tristan?
No, and I, I thank you very much. I think this is great. Another thing, maybe just to add to your list, that everyone binge-watches things now. So the other day, I wanted to watch Pirates of the Caribbean Four, hadn't seen that one, so I just started with one, and just worked through them all. So, you know, it's not, now that's, everyone does that, they just sit down and just work through them, so that might be another thing to binge-watch.
Is there a possible coming up?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a 24-hour session.
May, May the 4th, it's gonna be a national holiday, we can put all the Star Wars movies on in one day.
There's definitely some good ideas, I think.
I was at, I don't have a question, but I was at the movie theater this weekend, and it was, it was hopping, like it was fun, and there were a lot of people there, but I love your ideas. I think it could even bring in more people. Thanks for your planning.
Absolutely.
You have anything else you want to add, Tristan?
I, I got nothing.
Yeah, you failed to share what your favorite cereal was saying.
Um, Cinnamon Toast Crunch.
I thought you were a lucky charm person. Thank you for coming, Tristan. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
We love your ideas, and I'm sure you will see some movement on, at least some of them, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ronnie, thanks. So anyone else in the audience here for public comment? Items that may not be on the agenda? Chip, do we have anyone on?
There's no one on Zoom.
Okay. All right, so we'll move off from public comment and move to public hearing regarding, excuse me, no, extraterritorial allocation of application for Church of the Rock. You have that in your packet. Is anyone here representing Church of the Rock? I did not believe so.
Make a motion to approve the extraterritorial allocation for Church of the Rock.
Second.
Based on the application and the kind of materials we received.
Okay. So you guys, thank you. So we have a motion by Tim, second by Chad, to approve the, uh...
Trudy, got it?
Yeah.
Approve the allocation application. Any further comments?
Are we gonna continue to get these? Is that the idea? It's, I guess I was a little minorly surprised we had this.
For now, I like the letter from the town manager coming, so we'll...
I already approved this.
Yeah, it's a little more welcome than, than the other one, so, yeah.
I mean, they are still gonna be charged, I would think, now, half of an allocation.
They'll get charged the appropriate allocation fee. This, so, this process will continue until the contract is fully in place.
Okay.
So, thanks, Marty. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposition? Motion passes. Moving on to a public hearing for interim zoning, where Chip comes into play. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you for being here tonight.
On time.
I noticed that.
Yep.
I took your place, Chip.
Thanks for the cover.
He was ready to send out a rescue cart.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were over in Alamo.
Yeah.
I didn't know if you'd make it back.
We always come back for this, so.
Chip, floor is yours.
The last month, we talked about some new state laws that changed the rules that enable local zoning, and when the state law changes, it actually supersedes our zoning if there's anything that's a difference between the two. S-100 made a lot of changes to some of the building blocks of local zoning, and we brought forward a proposed interim zoning package for you to consider, because it would help us crosswalk our current zoning to that new bill, some of the things that were gonna take effect on July 1st, and you passed it. Well, then during the veto session, the legislature actually increased the number of things that would take effect on July 1st. It was a bit of a surprise to us. So, you know, the idea behind interim zoning is that a community is working on whatever studies and, and information it needs to, to make permanent changes in its zoning, and you're allowed to enact interim zoning as a, as a temporary measure while you're doing that. And I think there's a, there's a role for interim zoning, for our interim zoning to be amended and expanded a little bit in the meantime, based on some of these new developments with S-100 getting fast-forwarded. So, um, what we're proposing is some amendments to the interim zoning that don't expand the two years that were effective as of July 1st of this month, as you originally passed it, but it would add some measures to actually implement some of the things we were thinking we might propose as permanent rules, but you just, we just need some time to work on that. These would implement them temporarily from now. If I go through the list of amendments, the, the first amendment that's proposed is to bring our square footage of a required lot area per dwelling unit down to the new state mandated density of allowing at least five dwelling units per acre. We have some dwelling units, and we had some in the interim zoning that required 9,500 square feet per dwelling unit, but now, based on the new state law, the highest we can go is 8,700. That comes out to roughly five units per acre, so that's Amendment One. That's really just a change to come into direct compliance with the new state law. Amendments Two and Three are just administrative amendments that move a couple sections further down in the document, because we're growing the document if this amendment is passed. Amendment Four does one of the things we were thinking we were going to have to implement in permanent zoning, one of the things we wanted to consider, and we can still study this further before we bring it before you for permanent zoning, but temporarily, Amendment Four is a moratorium on any new residential space on first floors in some of the more prominent historic blocks downtown. With the drastic swing in the market favoring residential space over commercial space, if there is gonna be a housing boom based on new funding, based on new state laws like this one, we, we'd like our historic retail storefronts to stay retail storefronts, and this is something that our rules have actually gone back and forth on in the past. And so Amendment Four is, proposes a moratorium on any new residential space on first floors on the classic areas of downtown North Main to Hoyt, South Main to Stebbins, Lake Street, Kingman Street, just that first block of Bank Street, first block of Lake Street, not the whole thing. So that's Amendment Four, that it can stay, you know, it can be anything else that's allowed in the Central Business District. Any current residential spaces on first floors in those areas can continue to be operated, but we don't want to add any bedrooms or dwelling units for right now. Amendment Five is another idea that we were thinking we were going to have to implement, that the state, the new state rules allow for higher densities of residential units in our neighborhoods than we, than our zoning currently allows. And there is a concern of what might happen to conversions of existing buildings, many historic homes, and there are some permitted by right rules that, you know, they're, they're the law of the land now, and there are some proposals that would be brought to Sarah in the permitting office that she'll just have to say yes to. And one of the things that can service is what could happen to historic homes in our neighborhoods if they start getting chopped up into multifamily. And so Amendment Five suggests, or Amendment Five is a moratorium on any new external stairways affixed to the front of buildings in the city. And so one of the things we see when historic buildings get converted is that as part of the public safety codes, you need to create new forms of egress for all the apartments you put into the building. And we've seen in the past where sometimes in a nice home in a neighborhood, they put a fire escape right on the front of the house. And there's nothing in our rules right now that prevent that, and we'd never really assumed there's going to be a lot of that going on, but now, there might. And so, um, this, this moratorium would direct those egress options to be designed for the sides and the rears of buildings rather than the front. And for any balconies or shelter in place, that gets, we, we, this doesn't suggest a moratorium on that balcony that you put on the front of the building for someplace to stay until the fire department can get to them, but it does say that if you do that, the, it has to be designed with the same materials and colors as the rest of the facade, it has to fit in. There are some that are just kind of pressure-feeding wood, and, um, we, we often give that time to cure until you paint it, but then we say, all right, but then, once you can paint it, you should paint it. So that's what Amendment Five is.
So Chip, is that for just new builds, or is that for conversions?
That's, that's right, well, it's proposed right now across the board.
So what if you have a, what if you have a home where that bedroom, there, has two windows in it, both of them are on the front of the building?
They would have to see if they could do a refuge instead of a fire escape, or find a way to get them to a fire escape on the side of the building instead. Or perhaps the building isn't suitable for a conversion, right?
Chip, oh, sorry. Does this address, so I was thinking last night, like I have a double lot, I could put up a four-unit apartment building in my backyard, basically, you know where I live.
Uh, yeah.
So do, where are all the... What about parking? So are we gonna, are people going to be, does this address parking and having, taking away green space and adding more driveways and parking spaces if we're gonna have more apartment buildings?
The state's new parking rules are one of the things that still doesn't take effect until December of '24, so we have some time in there. And so for the next couple of years, our current parking rules will still be in effect, and our rules about the fact that you can only have one curb cut per residential lot, for instance, will still be in effect. So if someone wants to do something like that, they're gonna have to, in order to comply with those rules, they're gonna have to find a way to provide all the necessary parking, but also they're subject to setbacks, they're subject to the limit on how much of your lot you can develop, that's our maximum lot covered rule. So whereas the state has said our density rules need to allow, in theory, for five minutes per, per acre, um, we have a lot of other rules about the form of our neighborhoods that will still be in effect, and if you cannot construct those five minutes per acre in compliance with all of those other rules, you won't, you just won't be able to do it. You have to comply with the whole suite of rules. So it's not a free-for-all, but there are some aspects of our zoning, but that were sort of cooked into the recipe was the fact that we had density set a different way. We had multifamily allowed in some places and not in others, and our zoning was, is constructed with those assumptions. S-100 has broken a lot of those assumptions, so we're probably gonna have to come up with permanent fixes with, for our zoning that talk about, all right, if, if we do have to allow higher densities, what are some extra rules we're gonna make sure we have in place to make, make sure our neighborhood's look the same?
Can you make them voter occupied?
Um, there are, we're limited, yeah, that's something we could look at. That's definitely something we could look at for the permanent fix. This interim zoning is just sort of a temporary measure to, to allow us to comply with the state rules, but still apply the other rules that we think should also be in effect.
So just going back to Trudy's example, Barry, her lot, when they come before development review, um, she would need to have in the plans, plans for current regs, not anticipated regs.
Right.
So she would need the two parking lots per, per unit, not saying, well, we're gonna finish it in 2024, we only, or, we only have to do one and a half spots.
And I'm not doing it, just to be really clear, I would never.
Right now, our rule is two and a half spots.
Or two and a half, correct.
Yeah.
But it has to be what's current, that's what they present.
Right.
Without that caveat that, oh, well, we're, we're gonna open the doors in 2024, so thus, we only need one and a half spots.
Right.
So it's a time of perfect.
If you want, if you want your approval today, you have to comply with the rules that exist today. Which for now is gonna be a little bit of a mixture of S-100, our zoning, but with the interim zoning providing some direction and peace of mind as well in the meantime.
Just a couple things on this. So I've, I've had a few conversations on S-100, what the impacts could be within St. Orleans. A lot of people don't realize, or didn't pay attention to what that was and what the impacts could be moving forward. So I think we, you, Chip, whoever, and I don't, I don't think the messenger's done anything on it, Josh, I mean, I think you did the big picture, but not the impact. It'd be nice to start educating people what the impacts could be. And then number two, one week from tonight, Chip is organizing a community walk where we're gonna go look with Planning Commission at two or three, maybe four, existing housing units, and what that could turn into based on S-100.
Yeah.
So people around, that's a 5:30 start?
Um, it doesn't have to be, but it can be. That, the typical Planning Commission sign is 5:30.
So you'll, you'll get the word out to the council.
Yeah.
I, I plan on attending, I'm not sure if anyone else is, but it gives you the opportunity to actual visualize it, and instead of just having a subjective conversation on it, so...
Who here wouldn't be able to make a 5:30 start? 6:30 normally is good.
I probably, it's my son's birthday, so don't play that with me. So I was like, oh.
You can go.
Yeah. Birthday cake for everybody.
What number's that?
It's the first time he's been home in four years for his birthday. Come on, Chip.
Parking is a good segue. The Sixth Amendment is also something that we were thinking we might, we might need to explore for our permanent zoning anyway, and that is, and it actually has a lot to do with the TIB district, as well as just the nature of downtown itself, but if there is going to be more residential development in the city and more of a need for parking, we would like the provision of public parking not to be subject to speculation that might result in the removal of buildings in the downtown. So Amendment Six is a prohibited, is a moratorium on the demolition of existing buildings in the Central Business District for the purpose of outdoor storage or public parking, unless it's owned by the city. City can run municipal parking, but, um, we'd like a moratorium on anything that might end up with someone coming in and saying, I'd like to tear down this historic building because I'm gonna build a parking lot, because I think there's a market for it.
Does that mean every building? I mean, I can think of a couple buildings on Lake Street I like to see torn down, but have parts put there.
Are they historic, though?
After that's my question.
Well, this is historic.
Yeah, so is, is that what you meant to put in here?
Um, we could.
You said, you said historic district.
It says existing.
It's in the Central Business District. Most buildings in the Central Business District are not historic buildings.
Are not.
They are historic, yeah. We could revise this tonight as well and provide a...
Well, I like it, but I'm just wondering, you know, we don't wanna cut off our nose or spite our face either. Can we provide an exception for it? Is there some way we can, unless you have something?
The exception, the exception cooked into this is that if the city felt there was a place that made sense, it could be a city-owned lot. Or you can further adjust this interim zoning in the future, just as easily as you could do it tonight.
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
If it becomes an issue.
It's only good for three days, right?
This is good for two years, but you can enact this, you can adjust this, um, at any city council meeting.
Okay. Should we go to that?
Yeah.
Chad?
All right. So that's one.
So we can, we want us to vote on this tonight, Chip, or are we just doing it in a public hearing?
It's interim zoning, it can be...
So we're at number five, we want us to vote on, right?
Yeah, it's, interim zoning's considered an emergency measure, and you can...
Make a motion to the city adopt interim zoning for, what's the period of time?
So this would be amending the interim zoning, which is effective until July 1st, 2025.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions for Chip? Public, any comments? Still no one on Zoom. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing done, motion passes for the interim zoning plan. We're moving on to discuss East and West Stanley Court.
As the memo states for this one, um, we often find ourselves in the crosshairs of E-911, because we are one of those grandfathered communities that's allowed to continue to use our addressing standards and our historic street addresses, even after the new E-911 standards went to effect more than a decade ago. And every once in a while, um, the state staff will find a situation where they're like, you know, you really, you really ought to change this, because it's very out of whack with the current E-911 APR standards. And we take them seriously, because it's about public safety response. We weigh disruption to residents for changing their addresses versus compliance with the public safety goals of E-911. We've got one here that, that is a pretty good case to be a priority. Now, you know, you know Stanley Court, it's actually split right down the middle by Messenger Street. Part of Stanley Court goes to the west, and the other part of Stanley Court goes to east, goes to the east. So Stanley Court's actually out of compliance with both E-91, but also our own addressing standards that are in the ordinance, which says that addressing shall proceed from the street at which you enter the subject street, and then go 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, yada, yada, yada. Stanley Court is numbered as if you enter it from North Main Street, but you don't. It's numbered from west to east, but you enter it from Messenger Street. And the suggestion is to create an East Stanley Court and a West Stanley Court, recognize that you enter them from Messenger Street, and then number each of them as you proceed in that direction. In order for us to do that, which will give as much time as we need, we've, we've readdressed streets and buildings before, and there's a lot of communication with everyone in the post office, all the residents, and everything. Would, in order, in order for us to really do that, I think the first step would be for the city council to, um, consider making the name change that we would need. If you pass that, then we would be able to proceed with, um, the readdressing procedure. And then it could all take effect once post offices notify, new street signs are up, and then it could all be finalized.
As you spoke, the first thing that came to my mind is Gilman Street.
Lower and Upper Gilman.
Lower and Upper Gilman. How are those numbered?
Uh, from Main Street.
So how's Ferris Street numbered?
We, um...
You just changed Ferris to School Street.
Yeah, no, Chad, you got a good point. Ferris Street should be, Ferris Street should probably be on the list at some point, too.
Oh, School Street was from Main Street.
School Street's on Main Street, uh, but Ferris Street's probably numbered like you entered from South Main.
Ferris Street eventually should be numbered from Lincoln Ave in other direction.
Have any, have you had any discussion with any of the residents on Stanley Court?
Not yet.
Well, I'm not, I'm not excited about this. That's been there a long time. It's in my ward, and I'd rather that the residents is weighing on this. I don't know if anyone's gonna like East Stanley Court. I think I like Stanley Court East better than I like East Stanley Court. At least it stays Stanley Court. At least it says Stanley Court, but I'd like to hear what those folks have to say.
I'm fine with that. There's no rush, right?
Not a huge rush.
No. So you're fine with tabling it till staff has had a chance at conversations? Chip, you good with that?
Yeah, I like the name suggestion, too. Sounds better.
Anyone else have concerns about tabling this or?
Would, would we send out a flyer or newsletter to the folks who's asking there or?
We typically do everything, we try to make direct contact with everyone.
Maybe, maybe you can couple Ferris Street on for the next time this comes around.
Right.
I think a good explanation on why would be helpful.
The 911 piece?
Yeah, the 911 piece, I think, is gonna work.
Let me talk to our chiefs as well. You know, if this is something that everyone's on board, they think it, it could make a difference, then they can help us make the case. Cool.
You wanna move to table, or do we, do we need to?
I don't think we have to motion it, I think it's on for discussion and vote, but you can table it. I think you can, too.
Why don't you do that, I'll just table till August maybe, Chip.
Or even more, well, let's, that's good, we'll give it some time. We'll bring it back when we think it's ready.
When you're ready.
Ready, yeah. Yep. And you want us to also look at Ferris Street?
I think you might as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Gives you a little bit of animal when you're talking to each street, we're doing this over here as well.
Glad you thought of that one.
Thank you, Chip. All right, we're gonna move on to item number seven, which is the adoption of the Climate and Energy Committee Charter. This is something Dom put together, he's unable to be with us tonight. He did float it ahead of time. Have any comments or questions relative to the, to the wording?
When it says public outreach on bullet number three, is that including education? Because when I look back at the notes, we talked a lot about making sure that the purpose was also to educate the community. So when, that was my only question, does public outreach include education? I'm assuming it would, but.
I would, I would support public outreach and education, just to make it clear.
Yeah.
Anyone else? I think this would be a large part of the committee, anyway. Thank you, Trudy.
Any questions for public comment or motion?
Yep. Anyone else have any comments here? Jim, you're good. Uh, is there any public comment? Where is our team here? Mary, come on down. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Mary Harbaugh, Congress Street, 100 Congress Street. First, thanks to Dominic, he's catching up with this at some point, we're pleased with the charter. In the vein of the question you just asked, Trudy, there, the, there are a few cases where you could tweak the language, but I'm confident that it captures the spirit of what we're interested in. One such example would be, for example, activities designed to draw down emissions. Drawdown, strictly speaking, is not in there, but I think that level of specificity probably isn't necessary. I think that the, the language captures the, the goal of these questions about energy and climate. So I would just, I'll let you know that I personally think it's fine. It's not on your agenda, but we're hoping for at least some appointment granting tonight. And I'll set the stage a little bit by describing another thing that we've been making little feelers on, unofficial feelers, because the clock is ticking on this municipal energy. No, resilience, I don't know, anyway, there's a state grant that where we could get up to half a million dollars to work on a municipal building to improve energy efficiency. But the clock is ticking, ticking in February and March, and we're now like right on the line of being able to do something. And we have made little inquiries to Marty about the DVW building, there may be other buildings that should be considered. There's a requirement that you work with the Regional Planning Commission to do this. The city would have to be the applicant. We would be happy to do the research and do the work and work with Chip or work with Dominic or whoever, but it's the kind of thing where if we're gonna jump on it, we have to jump. So that's just, or we may say, look, we don't need the pressure, let's do it at our own pace. But it's just, we're just looking for some sort of guidance on that.
Mary, are you saying the deadline's in first of May or January, February?
Well, there, there's sort of a couple of phases. The first one is a, what we would do is, is they would get a grant for an energy assessment of the building. So professionals come in and say, or, or even help with the Regional Planning Commission to determine that is in fact an appropriate building as opposed to some other one. We did kind of a, an ex, not expert, I don't know, what do you think? Kind of which building seems like it could really need some work? That would be relatively straightforward, not as complicated as perhaps some other city buildings. So that was just a non-expert, here's some money, let's grab it, kind of a reaction. But anyway, that first phase, you get a grant for an energy assessment. So working with the Regional Planning Commission, they come in and they say, okay, windows or insulation or weatherization or roof or whatever they say, they, they do that whole thing. And it's apparently, there's a cursory level which sets you up for a lesser grant, or there's a more substantial level which sets you up for the bigger grant. And that initial period, it's not closing, it's still open, but they're moving into the second phase, which assumes that you've done your assessment and now you want your money to do the work. So we're kind of, wait, wait. We won it on this, so that's kind of where that process is. It's not, it's not a closed door, but if we wait another month or two or however long to kind of really get all our ducks in a perfect row, we really will, we really will have missed it.
Couple things come to mind for me, Mary, I, I, we are not prepared to make any appointments tonight, number one. But with that said, it doesn't prevent us from, as a, with the staff, to submit that application with, I don't wanna speak for staff, but for your assistance or whoever's assistant. Sarah, do you have thoughts on what that might look like?
Yeah, so it would probably be, it would be me most nicely working with you as the main grant, um, working probably with Marlena at the Northern West Regional Planning Commission, and I can give you my contact information, and we can set up a time to.
Tell you, Trudy. The, the first step is just nuts and bolts, like how much did you spend on gas last year? And how many square feet and all this kind of, you know. Somebody has to dig into the records and get some other source.
And that would be the legwork.
Super easy with our electronic system.
Well, like I said, we're, we're ready to jump in, do the legwork, do the, run things around. If, if Sarah's the point person, that's lovely, that's perfect, we're happy to work with anybody that you think we need to work with. If we can work as individuals, I just hate to lose out on a chance to get something good.
No, I appreciate that.
Something good for the city.
I don't know if anyone around the table, or Chip, or Sarah, do you know if the request for potential committee applicants have been sent out?
Yep, Chris has been having parties.
So it has been sent out?
Mm-hmm.
Do we know what the deadline is?
I don't know off the top of my head.
So we can pursue that and do concurrent, you know, interviewing members while Sarah and others work towards getting that paperwork done.
I think we also have the authority to appoint a temporary, temporary people as well. So if things were not ready for the next meeting, we could put it on the agenda that we would temporarily appoint somebody.
So just process-wise, it's advertised, we have a deadline, depending how many applicants we have, we set up a subcommittee, Pick and I do interviews, and then make appointments. I, I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves, but it could be, it could be in the August meeting, make the appointments and the committee's off and running.
There's one other thing that, I just wanted to kind of throw this out there because I think there's a common way that municipalities think about citizen committees. And it's mostly based on the idea that many of them have some kind of authority. They can vote on something and it's either official or quasi-official or something like that. This is a different kind of group. This is a, we wanna do a project, do you like the idea, city council, yes or no? If the answer's yes, we'll do all the legwork, we'll do the research, we'll come back and we'll pitch it as a project, a fully fleshed out project. Do you like it, yes or no? Via Chip or Dominic or whoever. So the necessity for a manageable number of members and quorums and staffing and those kinds of issues, I mean, it's lovely, but I don't think it needs to hold us up. The main thing I think that's important is not so much the, from, me personally, it's not so much the number of official members as it is, are we representative of the citizenry? Not necessarily as individuals, but in terms of outreach, in terms of gathering ideas about what people are concerned about, this neighborhood is thinking about transportation, or this neighborhood is thinking about heat shelters, or this neighborhood is thinking about, or the, this demographic, you know what I mean? I think that it's the idea that we wanna be responsive to these various segments.
Yeah, I, I think two things I'm gonna play there. One is we're at the mercy of our applicants, right?
Right.
So we, we don't know who will apply and who's interested. But that doesn't prevent the committee from doing some outreach to different parts of the community, different wards. And that, my guess is that's probably how it would sugar off, depending on what the makeup of the applicants are. So it's, it's sort of play by ear and see where we, where we end up and what, what road we go down to make it happen.
And in that same discussion about membership, I wanted to throw out the idea that on a given project, we're working, we're doing research, we're, we're doing work, work. Let's have some volunteers, let's have 20 of them. You know, it's, the idea of seven being a sort of hard and fast idea is, I don't object to it, but it's kind of, it's really works like the way the committee works.
These are voting members, so you could have 20 volunteers show up a meeting and your, your group decides to do subcommittees and you've got 10 people on each subcommittee and, that's fine.
That's right.
That's golden.
That's right.
But these are the seven people that we have elected to represent the city on this project.
And so the, the kinds of votes that I would anticipate we would have would be things like, okay, here's a draft of our proposed plan, do we all like it? Or here's a project we wanna present to city council, do we all like it? And that's kind of a, in the sort of decision-making structure of city government, subsidiary to your approval. So that's just a, a way to think about it maybe a little bit.
Marty?
Just to put your mind maybe slightly at ease, last year we got a grant through Efficiency Vermont, changed all our lights to high-efficiency LED lights, got our motion sensors. Through the league, I think we received some money for insulated garage doors and high-efficiency garage door openers. The only thing really down there is heat in our air compressor. We have battery-powered impact wrenches and everything, so we're a pretty efficient operation now, but not to say there's not more there, but I'm not sure how much more. And there may be some changes to that building coming, so.
Well, like I said, Jim Styles here is much more literate in these kinds of building energy issues than I am. And if there is another building that would be straightforward to, to work on, we could certainly shift gears, it's just that.
Fire is really the only other one. PD has moved this renovated with all the efficiencies.
And I'm sorry, I may.
Fire maybe, but again, there may be changes to that building with some, PD used to be some.
It might be better to have the committee be appointed and then have them presented with what's the latest and all the go for the city's facilities, and then they can see if there's low-hanging fruit for a MUR grant or an assessment might be more, might be more official.
Well, that would certainly, I'm, I'm just sort of trying to convey where we are in terms of wanting to move forward. And certainly as individuals, we can try to do what we, we want, we can, we're able to. But a committee would be a much better entity to pursue these things. And if it's a couple of months until we have a formalized committee, then we're really pushing it, so.
I, I think if it's been advertised and we get the interviews in before whatever, August 10, 12, whatever that date is, we should be good to go.
Okay, there is, I would just say quickly, there's a high school student who's a St. Orleans town person who's interested. And that might be somebody who wouldn't be one of the seven, but who could participate in a secondary way. So I would wanna get the message out that.
I mean, I think, I, I think I speak for the council when I say, the concern with more members is your quorum increases. Seven, you just need four to show up and you're good to go.
Right, right.
You get to 11, now you need, now you need six to show up and write the basis.
Yeah, I'm not arguing for a large committee, I'm just arguing for some.
July 31st, that's one application, of course.
Okay.
So we could set it up early August, so we could just start. The people that we have applications for now, we can just, we could possibly be all ready to make recommendations by August meeting.
Okay. Well, we'll see how that plays out. And then, just one other thing, and I hesitate to bring it up to your, this August council, because it's kind of minutia, but I see that the city is regularly asking for people to serve on other commissions and boards, and I know personally evenings are not my best time. And I'm hoping that we can offer something like a noon time meeting that would allow people who work the second shift, or people with young children at home, or older people, or anybody who for whatever reason can do evening meetings. My theory, and it's only a theory, is that, geez, wouldn't I have to sit around the planning board or another commission? But evenings just don't work for me, so I'm hoping we can do an alternate time.
I mean, I think it's a double-edged sword, right?
Right.
The ones that do evenings and do lunch, I mean.
Right.
But I think our feeling is that the committee gets established, you guys meet and talk about it. It could be one of the interview questions, well, it works well for you to meet, so.
Okay.
It's not, it's not for us to decide, it's for the committee to figure out what works best.
And then I guess.
Oh, sorry.
I, no, go ahead.
Jim had a comment.
Oh, yeah, so in terms of the number of members on the committee, I think, well, just the ability there can be very helpful. And you make a good point about on the high side, you know, and not going to learn anything. My experience on that, particularly in New York or Massachusetts, where I served on the energy thing, was that people are more motivated when they were members of the community, of the committee. But there are also examples around the month where they can't get some people. And so there are, and I don't, you know, we can make it work, I just offer that experience for a wider purpose for it.
I think the other potential which we can talk about or have a conversation with Dom is that having an alternate as well, that could fill in if, if you come up short.
So if we get, if we get nine people that apply and we think that all nine meet the criteria, all nine are good, we could appoint seven with two alternates. So if you have two regular members that cannot attend that meeting, and those two alternates can, you still have seven voting members. If all seven voting members come and the two alternates come, they just. If all seven voting members come and the two alternates come, they just don't have a vote that need.
Sure, and that's fine. But I'm also thinking a year, two, three, four down the road. If there's somehow waiting and, you know, there's turnover and if we don't have replacements, well, again, we could, you have the six or five or whatever at any given time. And I would, you know, is quorum still set based on seven or?
We, as a council, could say now, now there's five members of that board.
Right.
I'm hoping we don't get there, but it's really good and we've had, we've had applicants more than fill our board, so I'm hoping that there's good, I mean, there's, I mean, we look outside and, you know, we're looking at the impact that climate change is having on our communities right now. So I'm hoping people are realizing that. And there's a lot of stuff happening in the state, so I'm hoping we'll have good member, good number of applications.
Okay.
I would just say if anyone has any questions, either now or later. My email is here, Jim's is, and P D Potter is here. So we can answer questions if you have any. Thank you.
Beating, do you have anything to share? You're good.
I'm just.
And sorry, Sarah, I spoke for you when I said it'd be easy to pull up those numbers.
I think it was great. I appreciate your plug for our system.
The system is great.
We were the first in the state to implement it and it's taken off.
So that's your lead in, Sarah? If you want to come up.
Are we doing, are we going to adopt that or what? Seven?
Thank you, Tim. Entertaining a motion to adopt the charter as presented. We have a motion for Chad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Trudy. Any further conversations or questions?
With, oh, sorry, I amended my motion to improve Trudy's change.
In that case, you want to add to it? So we have an amended motion and accepted. And a second on that, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing of the motion passes. We're moving on to item number eight, financial report with Sarah.
Good evening.
How are you?
Well, how are you?
Good.
I have included in your packets a preliminary fiscal 23 financial report with some of my high level observations summarized in a memo. Overall, I think that when I look at this year, we had a plan.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Jim.
And a few things happened out of our control that we can manage in next year's budget. As I said in the text, it was relatively uneventful from an accounting standpoint, and that's a positive thing. There will still be some additional invoices trickling in. So the preliminary figures in the general fund are likely to change as we come up on audit season. These will be expenditures incurred during June, where we're just waiting for the invoices to come in and be paid in July. Those will post that. We have some additional receivables coming in, or the final adjustment for tax revenue at the end of August, which is the modified accrual period, which I'd be happy to expound on for anybody, expand on for anybody who is interested at a different time. Are there any questions? Maybe we all can start there with the members and.
You alluded to the over budget on the general fund by 1.2%, but that income was up. Where was the income up? Was that across the board? Was that with recreation? Was that?
It was, it was more than half of the individual revenue items that are listed here. So the big one is from a percentage, of course, you have a very large percentage on interest on savings because it's small, of course, but interest was higher than we anticipated. We had overall local option tax revenues in higher than anticipated, even though the individual segments were a little bit low. We had some miscellaneous revenues, insurance reimbursements for insurance claims in prior years that came in over budget. Clerk revenues are over budget, planning and zoning and assessing. Fire is about right on target at this point. Police and animal control is up. Dispatch is a little down. Public works is up. Recreation is up. The parking program was even higher than budgeted, although the expenses on that, in that program were also higher than budgeted. And the RJC came in a little bit higher than anticipated as well. So in a very strong revenue year, as I noted in my memo, interest and penalties across all funds are lower than budget, which indicates strong collections. That's wonderful. We certainly don't want to be making our, we'd rather give the money when it's due and not the interest and penalty when it's past due. So that was a positive trend this year. Some of our, our, our large part cost drivers on the expenditure overages were really repair and maintenance related. Repair and maintenance related in the parking garage and the parking fund. And some of our buildings for our older vehicles, the police department in particular. Utility costs at some of our newer locations were higher than we anticipated. Those were newer locations and now we have some actuals to inform our budgeting this fall. Other questions? Did I answer a question, Tim?
So just so you know, I asked, I had a conversation with Kelly. I think the board would be interested at the August meeting of seeing, before the pool was built, we had projections as to what we thought the costs would be.
Okay.
And it'd be nice to have a presentation on what the actual proved to be after one year. She did say it seemed to be very positive, but I think, I get a lot of questions about where's the pool come in relative to what the projections were.
Absolutely.
So I'm just giving you a heads up, I spoke to Kelly and maybe we could, if we fitted in August or September, that would be, I think that would be good to.
Definitely. If I, it sounds like you're talking about pool operating costs, okay, as opposed to.
And, and, and income.
Yeah, as you say, revenue.
You have new ways of expenditures, not construction costs.
No, not construction. Total operational.
I can certainly pull that together. And by the next meeting, I'll have more of those straggler items for June 30th as well.
How much of the reserves are we using in the wastewater fund to cover those costs?
At the moment, it's about $500,000.
We're, we're not going to use that though. I mean, how much, how much are we, of the reserves are we going to use to cover the costs that you outlined in the third paragraph?
The, the sled, let me, from the sludge overage. The wastewater reserves are, are higher than $500,000. It's over a million dollars. That sludge removal overage is $500,000.
So we're $500,000 off on wastewater because of sludge removal?
Yes, we are.
That's pretty, that was, that was a, that's, that's a pretty poor planning.
Well, so.
For budgeting, wasn't it?
Possibly. So this was emptying the tanks all the way down. So it's more than just the normal average annual sludge removal that we've been doing as part of operating, which is likely what was looked at when the sludge removal projection was made.
If I'm not mistaken, that was there during COVID, right?
So we didn't, we didn't use any for a long time. So theoretically, we would have been saving the years passed, right?
$500,000 worth?
I don't know.
So all that.
Seated.
Marty, so all that had removed from the tank and then disposed of.
So during the renovation, it wasn't removed. And so this is a part of that, taking it down. Typically, I think it's around 300 grand is what we spend.
A year?
Yeah, for outside contracting.
And you said it had not been removed during construction?
Right. Been probably three years, maybe four, since they've been completely reined.
So you're saying, do I understand you correctly, the three years, we would have spent $300,000?
Typically is what we were budgeted for.
And we did not.
To take down. What we did was with our own center future, remove that. Now what we're doing is having Senate side come in and take it beyond what we can do with their system.
So instead of spending $900,000, we ended up only spending $500,000. Is that, is that what you're saying?
I don't have the prior year data in front of me, but it sounds like that's, you know, from what Marty was saying, that it sounds like what operationally happens.
So it's not as bad as what it looks like on a piece of paper?
And again, now that it's down, now that it's down, we should be able to maintain it ourselves with what we have in-house.
And will that help with the smell?
Yes.
Down there?
That's why you're getting more of a smell now because they're actively draining those tanks.
How much longer will it take?
I, no, I have to check with Ronnie.
No, I'm just curious.
Couple weeks, maybe.
Oh, okay.
And the questions, Sarah? All right, you go.
I would.
So nowhere in here, Sarah, does it talk about how much reserves we have in our funds?
I was hoping you weren't going to ask me that. I stole your email flag in my inbox.
Okay.
So no, it doesn't. This is just income statement only for the one year and not the whole picture, which is coming together for the end of 2023 and is on my list.
Just making sure to overlook something.
Certainly.
Thank you. Sorry, I put you on the spot.
I don't mind.
I know you're working on it. You guys can.
I don't mind, stayed put on the spot.
What was the question you wanted? Do you want?
I wanted to know, and then she's like, can you give me some examples? So I gave her a couple of examples, so.
And then flagged it and moved on. At least she flagged it. I flagged it.
You didn't totally ignore it.
With a middle, with a middle finger.
No, of course. Any opportunity to do like a financial statement analysis, I usually jump right on. All right. Thank you all very much.
You too, Sarah. Have a good evening. Moving on to the mayor's report. Just quickly. Want to take up my, promote my kids, but my daughter's class, sixth grade, they had a discussion in class about what they liked about St. Albans and what they didn't like about St. Albans. Pros and cons. We won't go through them, but I'll just share what's, I thought it was interesting to see, see it through the eyes of a sixth grader and what they saw, or what they, how they view St. Albans for the most part. Some, some are contradictory, but for the most part, it was, I thought it was pretty good.
Just one mentioned the mayor.
What's that?
Just one mentioned the mayor.
No, I think it was unanimous. I thought they thought the mayor was doing an excellent job, if I remember.
Yeah, I think that's bullet number one.
Yeah. Yeah, that's one in a different type. So we don't want to spend time on this FYI for you to give you some indication. Couple of things going on. Got the farmer, farmer's market every Saturday, but we also have the car show coming up this Saturday. And then the following Saturday is the first Church Street Festival, which will be interesting to see. You know, I think, once again, daily compliments about how well the city works, Marty. Kudos to Kelly and Keith. I'm sure Keith is enjoying the weather. He done left it up at 5:00 in the morning, water flowers. So he's, he's getting a little bit of reprieve, but I think, you know, we are, I don't know if it hurts the businesses or it helps them moving forward. Maybe more people are out to eat and, but the outside eating is obviously down, but I think there's still a lot of activity within the city, so. I don't think I have, I don't think I have anything else. Marty, do you have anything you want to share?
Tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM, they're going to start setting the panels for the water tank. So if anybody wants to go up and see that, 10:00 AM tomorrow is.
They're going to be able to get up there with a crane?
They've got the crane up there. They set it up today. And they have representatives from DN Tanks there. They'll be there tomorrow as well. And then we've got visitors from Williston and a couple of other communities coming in Wednesday and then the state is coming in Thursday, so.
Just quickly, what are you seeing with the rain? We're not getting the torrential downpour for the most part. It's more of an ongoing gradual, are we, water plant?
We're in overflow.
Wastewater is handling it all right?
It is. We're in overflow. We reported to the state. Our monitoring station is more of an overwhelmed than in South Alabama, so.
Do we know how much?
Fletch of water is, I bet.
We're in much better shape than.
Many other communities around the state and we wish them all well.
Can I ask, Marty, what's going on at Upper Weldon Street? Is that a city project or some private thing?
That's Vermont Gas replacing the old steel main, similar to what they did on Beverly Court and are doing on Brown. And we're going to be paving. They, they did it on Beverly Court because we're going to be paving Beverly equipment, so they were getting ahead of us.
We're going to be paving Beverly this year?
Yes, Beverly Court, Quicken Court, amongst others.
As, as you demanded, Bob.
I didn't know it was happening. Where do you know? Like I have the ability to demand.
Marty, when are you going to share those, the paving projects?
I can send them out tomorrow.
That'd be great.
I can actually, if you, I can tell you right now.
Can you just send it so I could?
I can just do it for the public. It's going to be all this street from Federal to the old pool, down to the old pool, we're going to rebuild the top of all this to handle the truck traffic with the co-op, so we'll put a thicker layer down there. Murray Drive from Lake Street, down around the cul-de-sac, Beverly Court, the entire Beverly Court, Quentin Court, the entire road, Allen Street from Stevens to Lower Weldon, Stoll from Maine to Allen, and New Street from Maine to the dead end and Forest Hill Drive.
And Ruble, don't forget Ruble.
Ruble will get paved again this year.
And Tim's driveway too.
Just keep going.
We, we paved Ruble every year. That's why Thorbad hasn't been paved in a number of years.
All right.
One thing I do want to recognize is Handy Cars, Handy Car. For those who haven't been by Little League, Adam Luno and his team and the Little League Board have spent tens of thousands of dollars sort of bringing, not, not that it was dilapidated, but had really spruced up Little League with signage, painting dugouts, building new batting cage, just getting ready for the, for the regional tournament. And they did a heck of a job. Invested, as I said, thousands of dollars, many, many hours. And if you haven't been by, and Marty, Marty and crew jumped in as well, put a couple of speed bumps down there to slow traffic with people coming along from the parking lot. It really proved to be, really represented.
He has more than one contractor there for probably over three weeks.
Yep.
Working on different aspects of that part. They've got more work planned, I think, next year as far as fencing and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, they really, they really showcased St. Albans and.
And when you compliment him on it, he plays it down like it was just his startup, so. But they set the bar again, so.
So if anyone just get a chance to go ahead and thank Adam and his team for, for all their work out. You know, Noel, I know you've been driving, but you've been by there more than once.
Couple times.
Yeah, so it's, it really, it really, really looks good, so. Let's go around. Tim?
Ward one, waiting the opening of Mac and Cheese. Los Jeffys is open. The light's still not working on Newton and Main. Same old.
Mac and Cheese, I saw it on the door, it said July 1st. That didn't happen.
No.
I haven't noticed an issue with the light on Upper Newton and Main. What are you seeing?
I'm seeing cars, no cars going up and down Newton and cars waiting on Main Street.
Oh, the timing of it?
Yeah, yeah.
Not the?
It's not sensing.
Yeah.
It just cycles. It does, it does know when there's a car on Upper Dominion, right?
Yes.
Because it will, the light will turn, just green, air will go away, and if there's not a car there, it just stays green.
Yeah.
So it seems like the only one that senses.
Are we done with that stuff down by Lake Laurel Lake Street, going across the street? Todd and my interplace?
Way down?
The road stuff, the road work?
Yes.
Done with that? What was that? Gas?
He put in a new water line and a new sewer line to allow that he's going to build it outside.
He had to go across the street for that, huh?
Had to go all the way across from the sewer and halfway across for the water. But it was paved last week.
Yeah, saw that, yeah. Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
You good, Tim?
I'm good. I got something under other business, though.
Trudy?
I'm ready.
Good.
I'm all good.
Once you got the paving done. Noel, Daniel?
Uh, I have a lady, Nicole's here. Lady called me about boundaries on 23, on Cedar.
Cedar.
Cedar Street. Did you get that straightened out?
The permitting office is helping them the best they can, but it's kind of a neighbor-neighborship, so we can do.
Yeah, yeah. She had, we had a nice chat with her and everything like that. That's why I mentioned fence viewers down, down, you know? That goes back, I found out that goes back to the 1600s when they came over here, fences.
There seem to be a number of neighbor disputes around the city that I think they look for the city to resolve, and that's not our role, I don't believe. We, we look at everyone, and we, we do what we can, but, you know, there are certain things we shouldn't be inserting ourselves into.
Appreciate your question.
Yeah, thank you. Marie?
Nothing much. We had a little disturbance on the corner one night, a couple houses over from me, the corner of the cell, weren't found. Quite a few police officers came, but they seemed to resolve it and, and very peacefully, and a lot of hollering at first. Went out, it started for quite a while, and then they, they seemed to handle it very well, quieted things down, and done good ever since. So now all's good in my ward.
And what are you seeing with the, the intersection of North and South Elm and Lake?
Nope, North Elm and the cell.
No, no, the parking changes we made on Lake Street.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's been better. It's been better. It's, it's still times is a little blind, but it's not like it was, so I think it's a step in the right direction.
Good.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, I think I'm good.
Chad?
I, I am going to chat with Dom tomorrow about, someone reached out to me about burning, so it looks like their neighbor burns pretty much every night, so I am going to reach out to them about annual fire hydrants, I don't, or annual fire hydrant...
Flushing?
Flushing. I don't know when that's going to begin, but it'd be like, nice to let residents know. I think it's usually July, September.
We shut Fairfax down this week.
Yep.
For maintenance, for our yearly maintenance. That'll hopefully come back online Thursday.
Okay.
We're going to flush that in Thursday night, throughout the night.
Okay.
And then probably next week, we'll start the flushing, but we'll put notices out as to what hydrants are being flushed.
Yeah, it is nice to just let people know a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Oh, Mayor, I want to comment on your, this is kind of interesting with the kids, and one of its here, well, not the pros but the cons, have kids running around on streets at night. I've seen that when I was working, early in the morning, kids running on the street.
Yeah, I know it.
Yeah.
He doesn't talk about it, his kids.
It was his. But you're the one who started, did you, did you start the riot over on your street, didn't you?
No, I'm trying to sleep.
Oh. Is this?
Moving on to approval of minutes?
Motion to approve minutes, June 12, 23.
Second.
Any corrections or amendments?
Yes, I have a correction. I think you all were at the meeting, the last meeting.
Yep.
You came in late, but I was here.
No, no.
No, you were, you were out.
You were out.
Oh, I was out, yes, I was. I wasn't feeling well, I didn't want to give a pecker of her.
Well, I appreciate that.
Yeah. I was trying.
And then they had me as Ward Two, and I'm actually Ward Three, so just a couple minor cracks.
What are you doing, Kurt, behind all my ears?
Okay, any other corrections?
Yeah.
Trudy?
On, in section 12, the interviews for the BEI committee, myself, Chad, and, I don't know, Pete Claps, I don't know who that is, but...
It was me.
It was you. I don't know who this is.
That's my alias, I guess.
Is it? I was like, is someone I haven't met yet? And on number 13, I also was meeting with Tim for the finance committee.
Okay. Any other changes or corrections? Hearing done, all those in favor of approving minutes, would the suggested changes say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to warrant of nine, 630, 23.
Motion to approve warrant, 630, 23.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Hearing done, all those in favor of approving warrants from 630, 23, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing done, motion passes. Entertaining motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Mr. Hawkins, other business?
Two things. One is, I'm getting a little nervous about the number of people with nothing to do hanging around St. Albans and the amount of open drug use that I'm seeing. And we had an excellent farmers market and excellent, stores had a lot of sidewalk, some sidewalk sale stuff out, which was great, but there, there was some rowdiness up in the park. You also mentioned that you had some problems down in your ward, and I'd like to have the chief here at the next meeting with some specific questions that I'd like to ask him, because I've got a number of incidents I want to bring up. I want to know what's going on, so let's have him in here. I don't know if we want to do it either executive session or if we want to do it in open session. Either one's okay with me.
Well, you can reach out to Dom and convey that as well.
Yep. Also, the reports that we're getting weekly, I'm not so concerned about some of the stuff the fire department puts in there. There's some things that I, I, you know, I'm, I'm not concerned about, but one of the things I am missing is when Marty was in charge of the downtown, I forget what your title was back then, Marty, we had a great report. Every week, we always knew where we stood with the downtown. Now we've got ourselves a new assistant downtown manager, or Suzanne, and I don't hear one iota of her. So either let's have her come in here so we can all talk to her, or let's have something that we know what's going on.
Or both.
Yep. Everyone else agree with that?
Yeah, she just started late.
We did say we were also going to have the community justice center come in, because we haven't heard...
Yeah.
Boo out of them since Nina was there, and that's been a while, so it would be great to maybe start doing it where folks start coming in or...
But we do get, we do get a resur- justice report.
Correct.
But we get nothing at, like we used to get, out of what's going on in the downtown. And every time we have a, our meeting with the counselors for our visions for the upcoming year, downtown is always our number one priority, almost all, all the time. And now we're, we're not, we're not hearing anything.
You mean you want to hear more about the business development activities?
Well, yeah, I mean, what, what else is going on downtown? What's the city have going on?
That's what I was...
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
What interests or businesses showing down there? I think that would be...
Celebrations, challenges.
Okay, okay.
It's, I mean, it's the same stuff that he, that Marty used to report. We used to have like, you know, a five to 10-point report every week of what was going on. I don't see any of that now.
Nice.
That's it.
It's, I just want, I mean, it's, it's tough to get people to reach Marty's standards. I mean, I don't know what you're looking for, but you want to keep that in mind.
I just think, I just think that it's getting lost in the shuffle.
Yeah.
You know, everyone, everyone knows what's going on, but nobody knows what's going on as far as we're concerned.
Does anyone have anything else on other business? Hold on. We've still got 15 minutes, so why don't we...
Motion to adjourn.
Want to do a adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
And all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. Give us time to get out and enjoy them.